Good morning to everyone who is joining us on YouTube for our Wednesday class that we will never ever name. It's the class that will not be named or shall not be named for those of you Harry Potter fans. We're now going to record on to clouds. Welcome to everybody who is here on the cloud. We're here to study in the class that shall not be named. I think that's a new name, the class that shall not be named for anybody here, Harry Potter fan?
Yeah.
Okay, it's funny. So what we're doing today is we're going to talk a little bit about places we've gone and seen Jewish things. So any place Israel obviously is, you know, is obvious one that's one probably we should, you know, we'll leave off because if we have time, we'll do that. But that's the obvious one. So I have brought some pictures of I didn't know my pictures that I left them at home, but I online. So where are some really interesting Jewish places you have visited? The strangest winds? How's that? Anybody want to start?
Yeah, I could. I could start if you want.
If you have pictures online, I can make your host.
I have pictures online. If you could make me the host.
I would love to.
Jane and I can
Go through them with you.
Yeah, see how to do this. I forgot. It's been a long time to since I've since I've done this. So
For those of you joining us.
Share the screen.
Welcome to Flossy. Welcome to Ron. Welcome to Arlene. Welcome to Michael. Welcome to Jane. Welcome to Larry. Welcome to Karen. Is Jeff here as well? Karen?
Stuart, you mean Stuart?
Stuart, I say Stuart.
No, he said he plays golf on Wednesdays now. Sorry. Yeah.
Okay, let me see if I could share.
Don't tell him I got his name wrong for a second there. I just got.
I thought, okay.
And then there was the other. Yeah, there's another Jeff I was talking about as well. So that's why I got confused for a second.
I'm trying to get.
Try to put in pictures of where we Jewish places, synagogues. Oh, okay, Karen, what do we do?
You're on there. Just you just print. You did it. You made it just.
Here we are.
Wow, okay, you got it.
All right. So here's a couple of places that Jane and I have visited that we thought would be of interest. And I tried to find, can you hear me? And can you see if there's Jewish sites to visit?
Perfect.
Okay, so before, rather than me talk about a couple of them, because I couldn't find my my pictures, they must be in South Carolina. But I just thought, let me just show you a quick little video that I thought was of interest. And then I'll tell you a little bit about it. But I think the guide here does a better job than I do. And I'll tell you that when we were there. Okay, so.
Somebody.
Mount Nebo, that's, that's.
You make it full screen. Okay.
Danny, what a view we have right now. We are standing atop Mount Nebo. This was part of the Holy Land. But we're not in the land that you and I are usually in, the land of Israel. We are in Jordan right now.
The Hashemite Kingdom of Jordan. In biblical times, this is presumably the very place where Moses saw the promised land or most of it. But the Jordan River will be an obstacle he will not overcome. He will die before crossing over the Jordan River will be buried somewhere on Mount Nebo. The Bible says that it doesn't know its exact location. And Joshua will take over. Joshua will make sure everyone is circumcised. And then they will cross over with that out of the city of Jericho. You can see it vaguely there on the other side of the valley. And will eventually take and settle in the promised land.
Now, Danny, set the scene for us a bit more. Number one, again, an absolutely breathtaking view. God doesn't make mistakes. You can see why he brought Moses here to this vantage point to show him the promised land. Set the scene. Okay, we're here on Mount Nebo in Jordan. But as you mentioned, Jericho, what else can we see over the horizon on a clear day here in Jordan?
First of all, at the lowest part of this valley, the Jordan meanders its way into the Dead Sea, right under the sun. On a clear day, you can see the towers over Mount Scopus and Mount of Olives.
So you can see Jerusalem from here on your deck.
Yes, you can see the holy city of Jerusalem also from here quite well. Betlehem, you can see, okay, and the Judean desert, the Samaria, eastern mountains. They're all very visible from here. The land of milk and honey, just around the corner.
And it was so close to Moses, he could almost touch it. Yet he was not permitted, the Bible says, to enter the land, Danny. Now, some believe Moses was actually buried, Danny, in the valley below us, if I'm not mistaken, right?
The text is a bit vague. It mentions a mountain top, and then it mentions a valley. And it concludes with the statement that the tomb location is really just unknown. And maybe that's done deliberate, because in Judaism, the desire is to worship only God and only in one place up in Jerusalem. The tomb of Moses should not be any focal point of veneration. So the text says its location is unknown. Joshua now takes over. They will cross over the Jordan River.
Israelites cross over.
Where they will inherit the promised land. Now centuries later, in the same area, John the Baptist will start preaching for the end of days that are coming soon, and will start baptizing people in the water of the Jordan River. Tradition says it also happened here. In fact, tradition says.
The Jordanian side.
Yes, it says on Bethany beyond the Jordan, but in the same location argues the tradition where Joshua crossed over. The site becomes holy for both events, and even Elijah squeezes into that area. It is said that Elijah went up to the heavens also from the Jordan River or over the Jordan.
All on the Jordanian side. Danny, this is fascinating. I think a lot of people watching at home, they might not know this history that took place in Jordan. I personally did not realize that Elijah ascended to heaven on a chariot on the Jordanian side of the Jordan River. This is fascinating.
And then he went.
And he went up. And he was also perhaps born on this side, Elijah the Tishbite.
Elijah the Tishbites came from the Gilad Mountains, which should be in the northern area. This is the beginning of the Moabit land. Beyond us is the land of the Edomites, later the land of the Nabateans. Petra, Petra is also enjoyed in a spectacular place.
Yeah, and you mentioned the Moabites. I think Ruth, obviously, the story of Ruth and Naomi, Ruth, a Moabite.
Yes, David is a quarter of a Moabite. And Betlehem, where he came from, is right under the sun. Unfortunately, it's too cloudy today, but that's also visible from here.
Now, we mentioned John the Baptist. Much of his ministry and baptizing Danny on this side of the Jordan River. Again, it's almost like Jordan is an extension of of the Holy Land.
It's it's part of it. In historical periods, it was part of it, both in the Iron Age, it was the lots of the Israelites, Reuben and God were here.
So two of the tribes of the 12 tribes were here on the Jordanian side.
Indeed. Then in Roman times, in Maccabean times, it's also part of it. Aaron had one of his fortresses, the site of Machair, or Machair was here on the Jordanian side of the valley. And even in the Middle Ages, the Crusaders also ruled part of this side in Shubut.
Why don't we stop? So we don't spend all the whole time on the video, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted you to talk about what what did you go to? Did you go to Jordan?
Yes, we went to Jordan. Let me see if I could get back to, hold on. Yes, we went to Jordan.
That was really.
It was a pre-trip, actually, before we went to Egypt for the full trip. So this was like a week that we spent in and around Jordan. Of course, the major site in Jordan that we had expected to see was Petra, which we did see, which is obviously fascinating. But we did stand on that same site that these guys are standing on overlooking Mount Nebo on Mount Nebo. And there is a sign there, and it's done by the Franciscans. So the Franciscan church apparently administers that particular sign. No mention of Moses being a Jew on the on the little plaque. That's what I was looking for was my sign of the plaque. But Jordan is kind of a fascinating place. And I just wanted to show a couple of more scenes about Jordan and then get into Egypt for one second and show you a couple of other things. And I'll go through these pretty quickly. But if you were in Israel, forget about this word Alami in here. That's just their photograph of it. You've probably seen this in Israel, this mosaic a number of times. And I never really understood what it was about until we went to Jordan. And I think it was in the Church of St. George. And in the Church of St. George, on the floor of the Church of St. George, there is this enormous mosaic, or at least a remnant of it. And this is what you see all over Jerusalem and the tourist sellers. And everybody is selling all of these little maps and things like this. It's on many Israeli stamps. But this is apparently what Jerusalem looked like. Now, what is this? This was a tourist spot. This was a spot for pilgrimage. And apparently, the people went here in order to go on their pilgrimage to the Holy Land in order to get to Jerusalem. And they stopped in this area in Jordan over here. The other thing I didn't know about Jordan is in Amman, they have some of the Dead Sea Scrolls. They have, of course, they were found in the caves in Jordan by these by the shepherd boys there, apparently. And they didn't know what they had there. They tried to sell them. And apparently, they were you know, itinerants that were, what do they call the people that were traveling through there that that not pilgrims, but whatever they were. But this is part of the jars that you see there of the Dead Sea Scrolls. And they have a few of them. Apparently, these are not the religious Dead Sea Scrolls, the ones that we have in Israel or that Israel has in the in the museum, apparently, you know, the books of Isaiah and many of the other ones, they have pretty much everything there. Here, they have more of the fragments of everyday life. But what is really interesting is this one down here, which is called the Dead Sea Copper Scrolls. Now, they found these over different periods of time, apparently. Rabbi probably knows a lot more than I do, but you know, and this was apparently the only time that they found these Dead Seas Copper Scrolls. And what's interesting about these is that they are a roadmap, apparently, if you can decipher it, to the hidden treasures in the other caves of where they hoarded a lot of the jewels, apparently, they claim that were in the temple at the time that they tried to move. So that if you can decipher these particular copper scrolls, you'll be able to get to the treasure, which who knows what, you know, like this treasure of the lost art kind of thing. But that's kind of the myth that goes apparently with this. The the other thing that I wanted to talk about is when we were in Cairo. Cairo was, of course, a major center of Judaism. I don't know how many hundred thousand Jews had lived in Cairo at one particular time. And when you go there, they do take you on the tour of what's called the Ben Ezra synagogue, which is in Old Cairo there. Apparently, there were five Jews, they claimed, that are left in Cairo right now. Maybe four, right? Maybe this time two or three, who knows? Yeah. So Cairo is kind of an interesting place. And it's set up really as almost like a, you know, a relic to show that, you know, well, we have some Jews in Cairo. The one of the most prominent Jews that lived in Cairo was, of course, Maimonides. And 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 they talk about him in this little article that I kind of excerpted here. He lived there until his death in 1204. He was leader of the Egyptian Jewish community in 1171. He worshipped at Ben Israel and many of the Ganesha documents. Apparently, they had a very, very large Ganesha in Cairo there. And that's where they did find a great number of, you know, of records and things like this. So Cairo is kind of an interesting place. The last place that I wanted to show was another place that we visited that I thought was interesting, which was, this is in Poland, in Warsaw. And this is the Great Synagogue, which is the largest synagogue in Europe, second largest synagogue in the world behind New York synagogue. And this was the synagogue that was destroyed on the last day of the Warsaw uprising. The Nazis bombed this synagogue. And you could see what the synagogue looked like from sketches and from photographs that they had at the time and the neighborhood of it at the time. I happened to come across a site that was called the Disappointed Tourist. And this person went on this particular journey to try and find places that they had known existed, but were no longer in existence. And one of the places that they did find, and they went around, and I think they have something like several hundred photographs now that they took around the world, of which one of them is, I forget the name of the synagogue that's in in Warsaw there, that was in the Warsaw ghetto. The only thing now that that is the site of the synagogue now is this building called the Met Life Building, which is called the Blue Tower.
It's the Pujo building.
Was Pujo, right. Pujo apparently had a major interest here. When we were there, there was a slightly different sign on it that had Pujo's name on it. And by chance, I happened to notice in the guidebook that on the in this particular tower, if you walked around to the back, and this is the only photograph I could find, which was my photograph of this Wielka synagogue, there's this only thing that's noted is that this is the site of the Great Synagogue, which is destroyed on the last day. So of the Warsaw ghetto. Apparently, you know, in retaliation for something that they claimed was, you know.
We did also see some some rocks, some bricks that were supposedly.
Right. When you go there, what Jane is saying is that we did see some of the remnants of the walls of the Warsaw ghetto. They're very hard to find.
It's when were you there?
Oh, 15 years ago, 10, at least 10 years ago.
I think I think they've done better with the signs. I've had somebody was telling me.
Well, they have a new museum now also there. When we were there, right across from the monument to the Warsaw ghetto, they were building, or at least they had set aside the land for the museum there. And now they have a brand new museum, which I've seen pictures of online, which is absolutely spectacular. So if we ever get back there, you know, it's certainly on our list of things to see.
It's awesome. I'm glad you guys got to see synagogue there and Cairo and also go to Mount Nebo. Those are pretty awesome places.
I just want to jump. Larry, the discovery of the Cairo, we were, we also visited the Ben Ezra synagogue in Cairo a few years back. But that was a major discovery when they discovered the Ghaniza there. Does everyone know what a Ghaniza is? Where they bury? Rabbi, you can probably explain.
Well, until the Dead Sea, I mean, you know, you have these once in a millennium finds, and they had one at the end of the 19th century in Cairo, which was the biggest find in, you know, 1,000 years. But then now it's kind of gone on the back roads because they found an even more impressive one just 40 years later in Israel with with the Dead Sea Scrolls. But until the Dead Sea Scrolls, the Cairo Ghaniza was the once in a millennium find, a trove of treasures that Solomon Schechter was very famous for, brought along to the States and through the conservative movement. But yeah, that was that was the find until the the Dead Sea Scrolls.
Well, the Ghaniza, the idea of the Ghaniza is where you bury.
You don't necessarily bury it. You put it to the side. It's, you know, you know, kind of like as opposed to burying.
Okay.
Put it in a storage place.
Okay.
Of any documents that are no longer used, or, you know, obviously, a prayer books, Torah scrolls, but you know, some people, this one was used also as for other things. Thank you, Larry. That was amazing.
Yeah. So that's some of our adventures.
All right. Does anybody else want to share any places they've been?
Well, I didn't prepare anything, but I just pulled up some pictures. Stuart and I did. How many of you have been to Berlin? I wonder, anybody?
We haven't.
I've been to Berlin.
Well, Stuart and I, I mean, for me, it was, I thought I'd never set foot in Germany. And I finally said, no, you know what? So about seven years ago. But anyway, if you let me share.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, I forgot to put you on.
That's okay.
Put you.
I'll show you some pictures of our tour of Jewish.
That's great. I mean, again, that's one of those really difficult decisions people make is do I go to Germany?
And now I had it. Okay, we got Jewish Berlin tour. So again, I'm not gonna, I don't want you to be, can you all see this? Okay. I'm trying to, who does anybody read German? Or I guess if you know Yiddish, well, thinking this is this, let me, I don't want to bore you. So let me.
This is definitely not boring. This is.
No, but I mean, let me see if I can. Okay, get to the art. So I think it says behind this something.
But the thing you have on is too small for us to read. If you can, if you can click on it and maybe make it larger.
Oh, you can't.
We were seeing just the little pieces, the snippets.
Oh, you're not seeing the whole thing. Okay.
Seeing the large one.
Oh. Okay, I wonder why. Am I not sharing it?
You are sharing it. We see like, you know, when you that the list, we see like, you know, 30.
Oh, no. All right. Hold on. Let me go back then. I did.
It's a.
No, no, let me go. I'm seeing the whole big thing. Hold on. Give me a second. Let's see what I did wrong.
Well, if not, you can just tell us what it says.
Well, by German, I don't know German. And on this wall, what is Stella? Anybody know?
Stella is there's, it's, it's kind of like a marble thing. You write something on or a clay tablet.
Oh, all right. All right. Well, let me see if I can get it bigger because it's real big on my screen. I want you to see these pictures. Hang on one sec. I don't want to lose. I don't want to. Hold on. Stop. Share. Hang on a sec. Okay. Give me a second. Can you see it now? Is that better?
Yep, now we can.
You can see it big?
Oh.
Okay, okay. So I don't know if anybody, anybody know any German? But the this, well, 50,000 Jewish Berlin Jews were something that from how situation stuff. This may be from, all right, let me, let me go to the next one. See if I can. Oh, this isn't working. I thought I could go keep moving forward. Let's see. Oh, oh, wait, I see it now.
Are those arrows things on the side?
Yeah, I think I know what I have to do. Okay, let's see. Now I got it. All right. Um, this is a memorial. Again, I'm trying to remember exactly, but to the Jews that were, you know, that died in the Holocaust. So this is one of the parks in Berlin. Can y'all still see it? Okay, same thing. I again, I didn't do any editing, so I'm just again, some plaques. Again, there's so much in Berlin. We were shocked to see how much memorial memorializing. Then we we visited the grave of Moses Mendelssohn. You can see all the stones. So he died in what, 1786? And I think that's the other side of it, maybe. I don't know. All right. And then this, well, all right, this is just a shot of Berlin. It's one of the main squares. I'm sorry, I didn't edit these. Okay. This was a Jewish school, a gymnasium, they called it.
Karen, when were you there?
2015, 2015. Yeah, Jewish Gymnasium Moses Mendelssohn.
And what were some of the sites you saw were there, the Jewish sites you saw?
And just, yeah, well, all right, this one. Have you ever seen pictures? This is the Holocaust Memorial in Berlin that I forget who designed it, one of the famous archives. But the idea is you walk in there and it kind of the, it's supposed to evoke the feeling of the concentration camps and that as you you go down these pillars, not pillars, these, I don't know what you'd call them. But some of them are taller and some of them, and you you walk down in, sometimes it's, you're like, they're six feet above you. And it's just to evoke the feeling that sort of the darkness and the descent into this terrible, terrible.
How long were you in Berlin for? And did you go to other places?
Oh, we were in Berlin for four days. This was just, this was a private tour. We found this guy. And if you want to, everyone in Jeremy, something, he's actually an American who lives in Berlin. And he does these Jewish tours. It was an all day tour. So let's see if I can.
And cemetery, yeah, almost.
Well, exactly. But it's the way the the you walk and you're, it's kind of like you're up and you're down. And the stones are all different sizes. So it's just, again, another sense of.
But these are not a burial site.
No, this is just, that's all it is, is what you see. It was built, but it's huge. And it was built as a Holocaust memorial right in the heart of Berlin. So and apparently, I believe, again, I didn't prepare, I would have looked this up. I believe part of it stands on where Hitler had his bunker or something at one point.
I don't know. That's, I think Hitler's bunker now is like a parking lot.
Oh, I don't remember.
Like they didn't want to put anything.
Yeah. All right. Well, anyway, this is, so again, this is another view of it as you can.
I could be wrong.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't remember. There is one place we went, he said, we're, you know, but you can see how all of a sudden you're down and these things are towering above you.
And wasn't there a museum underneath it?
No, that's.
That's nearby underneath.
Yeah, I'll show you that also. But anyway, scoot through these. So, all right. All right, that's another shot of the whole of them. Okay, that. I saw the tour of Jewish Berlin. I know this, he took us to a neighborhood that had been predominantly Jewish. This is another memorial to the Holocaust. But there are a couple of things I want to get to that are significant, you know, you see the menorah and the Lion of Judah, I guess that is. What else? Again, the idea of these walls just broken up. So it's another one. Okay. I don't know what the, I'm sorry, I don't even know what this is. So I'm going to keep going.
That one had a British flag, that other one that you just showed.
Where? Which one?
I know you had one that had a, it looked like.
Two back. Oh, yeah? Okay. Oh, you're right. National Memorial of the Federal to the Victims of War and Tyranny. I'm trying, I want to get you to track 17 in Berlin, which is very and this is, this was a Jewish neighborhood back when he took us to suction. All right, I took too many pictures, but I want to, let's see.
You can never take too many pictures. You never take too many pictures.
Well, I, as I say, I didn't prepare this, unfortunately. So.
This was all, this was the same tour that you took with the guide?
Yeah, this was all in that one day.
This was one day? Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
How did you get around? Did he have a car? Or did he?
No, you know what? We took public transit. So we did a lot of walking. We did train, we did bus. I mean, just all local mass transit.
We did that in Budapest with a local guide also with Jewish Budapest. And it was wonderful as well. And she took us on local transportation. You know, just in and out of the streets. It was very, very good.
It's interesting. We were supposed to go with David and Terry Weintraub. We were both going to be on river cruises, and we were going to meet up in Berlin. And then their crews got canceled. So we ended up just the two of us. But what I want to show you this, just so you can see it, this is like a, I guess they call it the metro. So this will be the stairs going down or coming up from the metro. But look what they've done. They, these are all plaques of, I think it's businesses that were destroyed during the Holocaust. If you see the dates. Again, it's one more way they've commemorated, you know, kind of paid on tribute. There's so many, so I mean, these are all the things you can see, the name and the address. Yeah, Brad Hirschfeld and company. Okay. And I don't remember what this is, but just keep going. But I do want to take you to this track 13. I think I don't remember what that is. Oh, this is the synagogue, the main, which is the main synagogue. And I think I have a close up of that plaque. This was, I guess they call it, let's see what it says. Okay, so this synagogue is 100 years old. This was done in September of 66. So it was founded in September. Let's see, I can zoom in a little. You see it better? It's 100 years old in 1966. And something on Kristallnacht, it was something when the Nazis, anybody reads German? Stuart would understand it. Anyway, well, der Gestes nie, I think means never forget. So and then it's Jewish community, the mind is community. I know that. Of Greater Berlin, the Jewish community of Greater Berlin put this plaque up. So the synagogue is still there. We did not get inside. Okay, let's see. Where's, oh, here we go. Oh, there it is again. All right. So just again, some closeups of the beautiful, beautiful detail in this building. So okay, and then the arts, they call the Alt, the old synagogue. All right, this is what I really wanted to get to is what the lights of seven track 17. And apparently, this was where the, I guess, the railroad train, this was the point of which they deported many of the Jews from Berlin or most of them. So they've said it also as a memorial. And this is what you see. First of all, as you approach it, there's this sort of sculpture showing, if you see the, I'll show you another shot of it. This is me attempting to do a panorama, but the idea of these figure, human figures that are vanishing. So it's as you progress, they get, you know, they just seem to disappear. And this is what it looks like when you get up to the track. And so what they've done is they've put their plaques commemorating how many Jews and where they were sent. And people have left, just like we would leave stones, people do that. They've left different tributes to, you know, to the victims of the Holocaust. All right, October, one from October, my German isn't good. I never studied German, but from October 41 to February of 45, the Nazis, I guess the point was this is where they deported. uh, the Nazis, I guess the point was this is where they deported all the Jews to their death, I think it means. Sent to their death. All right, and you'll see, this is all these tracks, they've put up these plaques. So, for instance, this one says, uh, remember, the dates are reversed, so it's October eighteenth nineteen forty-one, twelve hundred and fifty-one Jews were sent from Berlin to Loj. And again, the next, uh, another one, eighteen, eight hundred and ninety-six Jews, I have, I have more, and you just get the sense of, uh, thousand twenty-six from Berlin to Riga. Um, Kavno, uh, back at, also nineteen forty-one, seven hundred and thirty Jews, just goes on and on. All the Jews that were deported from this spot, from this track, duration starts. Sent to Warsaw. Again, nineteen, it's just, it's incredible how many. Uh, I don't know what, is Umka, I don't know what, Umka, Umka Kant, I don't know what that is. Auschwitz. Yeah, but again, Auschwitz. Uh, oh, and again, just examples of people leaving little, um, like, what do you call them, Sedaka boxes, I guess, little can't, and.
Yard side candles.
Yeah, that's what it looks like. So again, somebody put in Israeli flag. Oh, no, yard side candle, that's what it is. Yeah, so in the stones, so, again, very, and this was the very last thing we did on our tour. And it was so moving, just so incredibly, and when you see just on and on and on, so. I think that's the last one. Yep, that's it. So that was just a very, and then I, I can, I don't want to show you the pictures, but there is, um, like, let me see if I can pull them up real quick. The, there's a Jewish museum in Berlin that, uh, part of it is an old building, and then there's a new part that was designed by, who's the, uh, I can't think of his name, IM, not IMP, I forget. Uh, but it's very modern. Again, it's meant to represent the Holocaust. And so again, it, it tells the story of the German Jews going all the way back, and it's fascinating how, how much a part of German society the Jews were up until the nineteen forties, so.
Yeah, thank you for sharing it. It's, yeah, a great irony that it was Berlin, because Berlin was a very liberal.
I know.
You know, understanding city before it was taken over. So, very interesting.
That, you know, I know, I wasn't a very good tour guide, but this Jeremy's name I'll think of. Decide to go to Berlin, let me know and I'll tell you, I'll get, get you in touch with him. I have his contact info. And he's very well known, apparently. Lots of people do, uh, Berlin tours with him.
Does anybody else want to share anything? Places they've enjoyed, that they've seen? Don't have to have photos or pictures.
Well, I, I guess I, I feel like I should share, and.
I would love to.
The, uh, the, the two places that I wanted to share, one, and I think probably a lot of people have been there, was Prague and, uh, and Budapest, and the, um, the Prague is, um, really just, uh, an incredible place. It's, the Jewish sector is, or section is, is very small. Well, it's not tiny, but it's, it's pretty small. And there's, how many people have been there? I guess. But, you, you know, if you remember the, the cemetery, um, it, it, it's so old, it's so dilapidated. Um, it's, uh, you, you just wonder why it's, it's still there, and, oh, you're gonna put a picture.
I found a picture of it. Can I still share?
Yeah.
I just put up some pictures.
Oh, you did, okay.
Using the ones of.
We had it.
If you want to put yours up, Karen, I'll take mine.
Okay.
Mine's not better. If you get the original picture, well, yeah, mine's like, like that.
All right, hold on.
Yeah, that's good, because.
Go ahead, leave those.
You know, you walk through, it's probably, as I recall, it's maybe a block, block and a half, the cemetery, it wasn't very large. But you have all these old tombstones, and what, what really left an impression on me, um, was the, um, I almost used the word pride, um, that the, the caretakers who kind of watched over the, the tourists. I mean, they couldn't have stopped anybody from doing anything. They were, they were old. Uh, they, at least when I was there, and they weren't very mobile, um, but there was, uh, you know, kind of, of, uh, a, a lot of pride in it. Um, I'm gonna divert my impression of Prague uh, in, in general, was that the, the people were probably less friendly than any place, any, any big city I've ever been to. There seemed to be very, and, and you may have a different impression, but they seemed to be very reserved, very suspicious. And the cemetery seemed a little bit, quite, quite a bit less so. And, um, and that was the first stop that we made, and then when we left, we walked down the street to look at the synagogues. Um, and, and, and there, the suspicion just, you know, just went up. It was, it was even difficult to get inside. Uh, you know, I, I, I think I had to say a few words in Hebrew to, you know, to let, to, to get in. And, uh, the, uh, the, the synagogues, that I went into a few, we, there were three of them, that, that are kind of like catty corner.
They were actually, Michael, they were actually six.
Six?
Yeah.
Well, there were three that were catty cornered, that.
Okay, okay, yeah, that may be, yeah.
And, uh, they, they all were, were, were quite similar, kind of, kind of narrow, kind of long, and the, the balconies, uh, you know, looked, uh, like they might not even be safe to, uh, to go up. In fact, in one place, they didn't, they didn't, uh, they didn't let us, and my, my daughter was, uh, how old was she? Maybe fifteen or sixteen. Um, she, uh, they, they didn't, they didn't even want, you know, a little kid to, uh, to go up, and, uh, and I remember the, uh, the Shams, the caretaker, uh, was, uh, just very, uh, very careful that, uh, you know, that, that nobody else came in, trusted, uh, you know, my family, but, uh, I'm just saying, you're always on the lookout for, you know, vandals, and it was, uh, it was, uh, yeah. It wasn't, uh, you know, a pleasant, pleasant experience, I guess is the right word. I, I, I was gonna go to one of them on, on Shabbat, but I, I slept late. Hey, you know.
You're on vacation.
We were, we were staying, we did, we, we were staying in an apartment, oh, probably about twenty-five minutes from, you know, any tourist, uh, places. And I just didn't get up in time to, to walk. Obviously, I remember it and I kind of regret it.
Well, you should feel guilty, if that's what you're looking at, Michael. You should feel guilty.
Well, I don't feel guilty, I just feel regretful.
Karen, did you want to add something?
I just want to make a comment about Prague, because they have amazing museums, and what they've done is each of these synagogues is sort of set up differently. One has a wall, if I'm, see if you remember this.
When, when were you there, Karen?
I must say, the two thousand six, so a long time ago.
Okay, I was there before that, so.
So even longer. Well, what I, what I do know about Prague is apparently Hitler, he took, he had decided to create, um, his goal was to create a museum of the extinct Jewish people.
Right.
And he thought it should be in Prague. So as they desecrated all these synagogues, whatever Judaica, Torres, whatever, was shipped to Prague. So they have this enormous collect, twice so many of the Holocaust, um, tourists that have found their way to other synagogues around the world have come from Prague, but they, um, so much stuff ended up there, that they have these amazing, some amazing, a couple of amazing Jewish museums there with all of this stuff from all over the world, all, well, all over Europe, I shouldn't say the world, all over Europe, so.
Yeah, that, and that's, and that's the only reason those synagogues are.
But, um, there's actually kosher restaurant there, and we had, Jane's waving her hand.
Jane?
We had, uh, no, we had gone also to Prague. What I remember most is that the people that gave the tours were not Jewish. Which surprised me. You would think that at least we'd come in contact with one person, but we didn't. Um, and through the cemetery, and I remember they were looking for a rabbi that I had never heard of. Do you remember Larry?
No.
The tombstone of him?
No.
And we didn't find it, obviously, because we had no recognition of him.
You know, we have it, make for Israel, we have a Holocaust Torah.
Do you know where it came from?
I mean, they probably were like, you're Rabbi Lo, I mean.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Known as the Maharal.
Rabbi, where did the Al Holocaust Torah come from?
From Slony, which is about forty-five minutes outside of, um, Prague.
Okay.
Rabbi Lo is famous for the, you know.
The thing is that that Torah is only, that Torah is only on loan to us. If the, in Slony, if they start up another congregation, we have to send it back to them.
Exactly.
But we have to keep that Torah perfect. In fact, that's one of our kosher Tovs.
And, uh, I don't think the odds are that they're not, there won't be a new Jewish community in Slony anytime soon, but hopefully one day.
I want to just mention something about you, since we're talking about Prague. I remember, one of the congregations, one of the synagogues was a Sephardic synagogue. And they were, we went to a concert one evening, um, that they did in, you know, at the synagogue. And it was a combination of Yiddish, I'm trying to remember, it's Hebrew and Yiddish, I guess, music. They were really trying to bring back Jewish culture, and I'm sure the people that were singing and performing, seems like there were a couple of them were cantors, maybe. So it's a long time ago, but I do remember that, be, it was very moving, being, sitting in Prague and hearing all this Hebrew and Yiddish music, you know, singing, it's just.
I don't remember whether, I say, I don't remember whether it was Prague or Budapest, but we ate in a restaurant called The Golem.
That's probably Prague.
Probably, is that where the legend came from? And they had a statue of the Golem outside, and, uh, you know, the legend of the Golem is kind of interesting. He's like, yeah, he's like the savior of, uh, oh, you have a Golem?
From Prague. And other people brought me little ones too, so.
Oh, okay.
Very cool.
They love the, they love it, they love the Golem in Prague, because it brings a lot of money.
Okay.
Were you gonna talk about Buddha?
You know, uh, I, I, I just wanted to mention also, and it, it's, it's so different from Prague, is the, uh, and, and you mentioned the, uh, city, uh, the, the synagogue in Budapest.
Uh.
You know, I, I, I think that's worth a mention, because, um, it's, it, it's just, I, I think it's the largest in Europe, if, if not the world.
Yeah.
And.
Paul from Hungary?
Huh?
Are Eva, Eva and Paul are here? Are they from Hun-, are you from Hungary?
Yeah.
I.
Oh, there they are.
Yeah.
Wow, that's Eva.
Like, they're on mute, you're on mute, so we can't hear you, Eva. I see you talking, but you're on mute.
Have you met them? They're lovely.
Oh, yeah.
Eva and Paul Geller, they've been so good to me.
They're great people.
Can you hear us now?
Yes.
Are we there? Okay, so we are from Hungary, and I went to school, yeah, this is the main synagogue, and it's really, really beautiful. Uh, yeah, there are several, and there used to be a lot of Jews there, but now, of course, everybody's trying to leave here and there. But Paul still has a cousin there. He used to own, or not own, but operate the, um, one of the, um, kosher restaurants that was there. Called the Carmel, and, um, you know, they, they do have still kosher restaurants, and they have, uh, you know, restaurants that would actually take meals to people, you know, kosher meals. It's not really, um, it's like milk stuff, not, uh, kosher for meaty stuff, you know? Uh, but the synagogue itself is absolutely gorgeous, and we, you know, we were there. But we came from a little village that we also had a synagogue in the little village. It's, of course, no longer there, but.
What's the name of the village?
The village's name is Mezarchat. It was like, at the time we were there, it was like, uh, five thousand people was the, you know, the, um, population. Now there is no Jews left. I think, uh, my mother passed away about ten years ago, and there was, at that time, one other Jewish guy left in the little town, but he's no longer there anymore, and the synagogue.
She was one of the last two Jews to live in that city.
She was one of the last ones left, and she, um, had, you know, anti-Semitic experience. Somebody did, you know, um, break into the house, and there was knives and whatever. So things weren't good, but, uh, the synagogue had been sold, and now is a.
It will be rebuilt.
They are using it as, um,
Social.
Social hall for the town. But the outside of the building, it has refurbished, or, you know, made it nice, and we went in there, and the synagogue also sort of like the Prague synagogue, what Michael was showing, is, um, you know, a lots of old, you know, tombstones, and of course, both of our parents are buried there, and so.
So it's still avail-, I mean, it's still open.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah. So anytime we go, we, uh, bless you.
Thank you.
Lovely.
Perhaps you can clarify something. Uh, I remember the Doheny synagogue.
Yeah.
Over the title of the name of the synagogue, there were a couple of little, like, stars or something that were over a couple of the letters. And the guide said something that these were some kind of a, um.
God bless you.
Lovely.
A mystical symbolism of some sort, that, uh, that there were a couple of little symbols that were to be interpreted, I don't know, by, by more learned people or something like that. Have you heard of that?
No.
I don't, I don't have a picture of it with me, but I know I took a picture of the, uh, the sign over the Doheny synagogue, you know, with the letters there.
It's beautiful, and.
And the only thing I remember, that the back of the, the synagogue, there is a social hall. Before I left Hungary, we used to, uh, every holidays, we would, we would have a occasion that they opened it up, and there was music, and all the young people showed up.
Dancing.
Dancing, everything. It was different, but I think right now is a museum, and, um.
Well, in the garden there, I think, wasn't there that tree that the Tony.
Yeah. Well, I have a picture of it, I want to, I can share my, I can show you the big.
Yeah, the tree of life is beautiful, yeah.
Yeah, I have it here. Can you see it?
Yes.
Did it come out?
It's, it's beautiful, yeah, it's.
Each of the leaves are, isn't it a name of somebody?
Yes.
Yeah.
Died in the Holocaust.
Yeah. Yeah, it's really nice, very nicely done.
Another Stewart, but that's another.
We had seen this, obviously.
Yeah.
But across the street, we had gone to, it must have been a yeshiva. I was gonna say a tamatan.
Yeah, there is.
I think it must have been a she-, a yeshiva.
It's what each leaf looks like.
It was so dark, the kids were learning in, in, it was really weird, remember that?
Yeah.
They, they were learning Yiddish, and it sounded to me like Yiddish, anyway, maybe it was German. But, um, it, it was, it was such a, it was so different from the outside of the, what you would be looking at at the synagogue, and then you came to this, this doorway, like.
Could you, could you enlarge this one over here, Karen? The one that says, the, the.
That's Rabbi's.
The. Okay.
Yeah.
I just want to see, we can see those.
The one, the inside, the inter.
Inside.
No, the outside, it's, it's.
That one.
It, it's the, the one to the left of that. To the left, to the bottom, one down and one to the, one down now. That's it, yeah. Could you enlarge that? You see, you see the words there, the, the Hebrew words? Let's give you a picture of that.
There you go.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, see, that's where there was supposedly, oh, on the sign that we saw, there was supposedly some little symbols above certain of those letters that had extra significance. Okay, I don't see them now.
Can you?
Signs that were above a couple of letters.
I was just gonna add the colors. I think it's one of the most beautiful synagogues in Europe. I mean, really.
And it says here, and I will build, and you will build for me a holy place, and I will dwell on it.
Hmm.
Budapest by the river, they have the beautiful memorial with the shoes.
Shoes. By the Danube, yeah.
By the Danube, yep.
But Doheny.
It, it is a beautiful synagogue. It's, uh, it's, you know, sometimes.
Come on.
Rabbi, what does Doheny mean? Why is it called Doheny?
It's a place.
It's.
The street is.
That's the. That's the street name.
Yeah, Doheny Street is where it is. There's one in, uh, in Canada called the, uh, forget the famous synagogue in Canada, it's on a certain street.
Oh, yeah, it's the, uh, the one in Toronto.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, it's the biggest conservative one in the world.
It's the one that, uh, no.
In our neighborhood, the synagogues always had two names, the Hebrew name and the street name. You know, the street name was the, the South Street synagogue or something, you know, and then they had the Hebrew name as well.
Orange Blossom, something blossom.
Yeah, or like, not orange. That's, so you're right, it's like.
Yeah, it's on Holy Blossom Street or something, something like.
If I can find it. Oh, maybe it's Reform. That's, that's, that's. Yeah.
What's his name? Who did the Torah commentary? Was he from that synagogue?
Holy Blossom Temple, was he? I think you are right. I think he was, yeah.
Who's temple, who's the Torah, uh, commentary?
Gunther Plaut.
Thank you, I could.
Yeah.
The commentary we use, this one. He also wrote the previous one. I think he only died, I think he died in the last one, ten.
Oh, yes.
At all age.
Yeah, yeah. I met him twice, I think.
Yeah, he lived to be ninety, he was almost a hundred. He was ninety-nine and a half.
Wrote a book about aging or something.
Well, that was excellent. Very cool. So we talked, looked at Berlin. We looked at Budapest, Prague, Cairo and. Mountain, and Mount Nebo. Not, not too shabby. All right. Um, say hi for me. All right, so for our next class, so we can do this again, or we had scheduled. Um, for next week, I've just put it up here. Good job, that was really interesting stuff. Thank you for bringing the pictures as well. That made it really even more special. So next week is Jewish Broadway. Which is not something I'm an expert at, but I'm gonna see if I can find Tim's notes, cause he was.
I have a.
And I wanna thank Michael, because I forgot to call Michael. He gave me this wonderful book. That I was supposed to call him to say thank you for, and I brought it here just to show here, yeah, there it is. To make sure I said thank you for it. Here it is. Thanks for reminding me. I was sitting right here, almost dead. It's a Jewish guide to Gerona, or is it called Girona?
Oh, oh, I would tell you about Gerona sometime.
I thought it was.
Did you go to Gerona, Michael? Is that what?
Yeah.
We did too, yeah, a few years ago. That was wonderful.
Yeah. Probably, it's probably, uh, more fascinating if you were a Game of Thrones fan than, uh.
Yeah, you were telling me, I, you know, now I need to go back and check that.
Oh, I. We had, we spent.
They have like those tours all over the place.
Oh, Gerona's, uh, and it's, yeah, it's.
Yeah, they do.
An hour to head from Barcelona. We were going on a cruise out of Barcelona and I had read about Gerona somewhere.
Special about it, the Jewish quarter is.
It was ama- I'm sorry, Michael, go ahead. What were you gonna say?
The Jewish quarter is, is very, it's very, very well preserved, but it's very, uh, it's very nondescript at the same time and, uh. You know, it's a marker where the synagogue was and there's a Jewish bookstore and museum, that's where I got the book. And, uh, and that, that's pretty much the only identification of it being a, a Jewish, uh. Sector, but it's incredibly well preserved.
Go in and visit the old synagogue, but apparently in its heyday, in the twelve hundreds to fourteen. Who was, was one of the well-known rabbis, the, um, not, uh, who was the Ram, Ramban? Which one was the Ram?
It's the Ramban, but it was not a name like that.
It was Nachmanis. Ramban was born in Spain, but he did end up living in Egypt.
No, it's Nachmanidis.
He is from Gerona. Or is it Gerona? It's Gerona, right?
Well, it's pronounced Gerona, because it would be. But Catalunya and the pronunciation is in Catalan, a little different, cause it's so close to France. Yeah, which is kind of.
Yeah, so Nachman is the most famous person from there, although he ended up living in Israel.
Yeah, yeah. He had also another, like, not, not Ramban, but another name, they call him the.
He's called the Ramban. So he's the Ramban with an N. So he's famous for the famous dis- disputation where he, you know.
I mean, just visiting Gerona in and of itself is beautiful, so it's.
I never made it up that far. I, I did Southern Spain through Mar- Barcelona and then went right from Barcelona to Italy.
Just FYI, when we went, we were going on this cruise out of Barcelona, so I think we flew up. Flew over three days early, rented a car ride at the airport and drove to Gerona. And from there, we did a day trip the next day. Up to, um, to see Salvador Dali's museum.
And then Elia's House.
Yeah. Yeah, the one in, in Cadakeis is the name of the town, right on the.
That was so cool.
Next week, can we maybe start with a few places in the United States or other areas outside of Europe?
Well, we could do that instead. Why don't we do, we could do that, do Jewish Broadway the week after.
Because, you know, Make for Israel in Curacao was also a wonderful synagogue.
You wanna do best Jewish places in the Western Hemisphere?
Yeah, that.
I'll tell you that now. Also do that, we'll do that, then we'll do Jewish Broadway the next time or next time.
Does Capps's count as a Jewish place?
Oh, yes.
I mean, it's not kosher, but, you know.
Yeah, that's gotta count as well.
Yeah.
I don't know if you've seen this, PBS just did a wonderful special, not, I don't, we saw it not long ago. About Broadway musicals and the Jews. And I ordered the DVD. I don't, I forget how long it is, but if you can, anybody wants to look for that, maybe you can find it online. Just FYI.
Excellent. Well, it's awesome, guys. Thank you very much. And I, I'm glad somebody else went to. You know, hear that many people who went to Salvador Dali's house, which is north of Barcelona, right?
Yeah.
I, well, from Gerona, it was about a forty-five minutes to an hour.
I did go to Gerona there, because I, I'm trying to remember now if I went.
Well, his, his museum is in Figueres, is the name of the city. So it's kind of like a triangle, Gerona. We drove to Cadakeis, maybe another forty-five minutes over to. To Figueres Museum and then back to.
Salvador, I, I, I hope, maybe he was Jewish way back.
No, no, I don't.
I'd love to claim him.
A lot of Christian iconography on this thing.
You saw his DNA, I bet you part of it is, uh, you know.
Yeah, that mustache.
Well, I, I, I laid says everybody has a little Jew and.
Well, they have a wonderful Salvador Dali, uh, museum in, um, St. Petersburg.
It's wonderful.
Well, guys, always a pleasure. So we will be doing, then next week, we'll be doing Jewish places to visit in the Western Hemisphere. So bring, bring your ideas. And then, uh, any questions or thoughts on anything else going on that we need to mention? All right. Next week, hopefully we'll see you Saturday. Do have services Friday and Saturday.
Well, Rabbi, I just wanted to comment. I like, I like your comments on Tisha Bov. That was very insightful. I thought about, you know, that, um, you could take a holiday and you could, uh, turn it on its head almost. You know, the holiday of, um, you know. Yet, uh, the positive, I know, you know, people have said that about the Holocaust, I've never really bought into it that.
No, the Holocaust, not either. That's, that's, but this was the day we, this is very different.
Yeah, the way you traced it back to the fact that, um, now we have thousands of synagogues compared to one temple.
Well, like I said, you know, we.
Sorry, I missed most of the other talks. Uh, I, I heard the lady talk from Macon, Georgia.
Oh, you were talking about that talk, I thought you were talking about the Shabbat service, yeah. See you guys on it, yeah. Hopefully I'll get on you. We did a Tisha Bov program with a variety of synagogues run by a friend of mine in Florida. Thanks, yeah. I went on first. I thought I was in, excuse me.
Bless you.
I bless you. Now he won't sneeze.
I, my, my sneezes are very soft, you didn't even hear it.
He would himself, that's why. I saw that.
So, the thanks Larry and Jade for joining. It was really, really interesting. Well, you guys stay safe. Stay safe, everybody. Larry and Jane, thanks. And I think we're gonna try and figure out if we can put that link on the Facebook page at least.
Well, if you could, that would be great. Yeah, yeah. Cause fortunately, with other people at the, um, and, um. We didn't stay it all that long, cause they were not into it as much, so.
I thought I was gonna get off. I thought I was just doing my thing and I found out I stay on, so I was, you know, so.
Oh, I didn't realize you had another part to it as well.
I did not, but they were asking us to stay on and then there was gonna be a discussion later, so.
I see, okay.
I'll talk to you guys later.